Um, the Congress has to order. It is one minute and six, and we know that needs to come to be a complete swipe. But we do have a call. So let's look at our agenda. We need to, um, adopt an amended agenda, which is that if we go down to, um, twelve C, we're going to bring that on the meeting this time. We will, you'll be seeing it later on another time in another meeting. But that will not be on our agenda for tonight. So this is twelve A and B. Having said that, um, the motion to approve the amended agenda. I move with you adopt the amended agenda.
No, thank you.
We all agree. And so the agenda is adopted as a move. Now, we're going to go to public comment. I'm not gonna...
Sure she is.
Is it, we're gonna start with you?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Just through the people who are here.
Where is our fine voice?
You can get back in there.
Please, in there. Yes, someone, um, join us, please.
Let me get my timer going.
He's got pretty much like this.
Morning, Son.
Yes.
You ready?
Yes, we need to bring these in one by one.
Right. I know you're in the podium, correct?
Um, yes, they are.
It's weird, I know. They're sorry.
I'm Joy Booth. I live in the suburbs of McAvil. Been here since nineteen seventy-two. And I'm very grateful to all of you for your public service. I've served as the president of the chamber and president, past president of Rotary, and we always believe to give them back to the community. And I'm here, um, I am the coordinator of the Yancey County Volunteer Mask Makers, but I'm not speaking on their behalf. I am not speaking on their behalf. I'm just speaking as myself because I want to tell you about them. Because, um, I have no answers to all that's going on in Yancey County, but I did want to share some hope. In March of twentieth, two thousand and twenty, one Sunday afternoon, I started sewing some masks because I have friends who are doctors and nurses. And at that time, they didn't have enough PPE available. And it just began from there. I didn't go out soliciting anybody to sew. I did put up a Facebook page and people began, you know, to see and offer to sew. Some of these women, I've never laid eyes on because I'll go out and just, I have it set up with just like tubs where they can put their masks and I can pick them on, up, excuse me, so that we don't have to expose each other. They always say, the ones that talk to me on the phone or in person, to tell whoever gets my mask that I made them with love and prayers, that they stay well. And these women are sewing alone in their homes and they're all over the county. They're in V log, they're in Pensacola, South Oak, Ramsey Town, Green Mountain, all over the county. And, uh, they are women who were born and raised here. There are some women that have just moved in here, this area. And, uh, I've never had one of them, I've never had one of them ask me, who are you gonna give this mask to? I've never had them tell me who to give it to. These women are Democrats and Republicans, or they're not political at all? They're Baptist, they're Methodist, or they're not perhaps religious at all? But their masks are made with loves and prayers. And, uh, as of now, we've sewed almost twelve thousand. And they've gone to people that these women may never know or meet. What these women have in common, what we have in common is our love of the community. And, uh, being the coordinator has come to feel, uh, to me, uh, just very precious and like, being the coordinator is like having the opportunity perhaps to, to just do a bit of, a bit of good, like sometimes it feels like a bit of holy work. Uh, and I value the trust these women put in, have put in me to get the mask out in the community. Uh, we've made masks for doctors, nurses, um. If I, uh, put on Facebook, I'm running out of a certain kind of mask, I'll get a call and somebody will set up all night. I had a woman out in V log that when the nursing homes requested masks, and we don't tell people, we don't, we don't, they ask us for the mask. We're not pushing them on anybody, all right? And, um, I had one woman out in V log and two days made a hundred masks. Okay, so we were able to get masks to all the nursing homes in Yancey County. And, uh, uh, and then the nursing homes were saying, well, our people have arthritis in their hands, they have range of motion issues. And I just said, I said to the women, you know, how can we invent a mask that can actually get off and on? And they put their heads together online, right on Facebook. And next thing, I had three hundred easy off and on masks to take to the nursing homes. I believe anyway, there's a, there's an extra measure of healing in these masks that are made with these women's love and prayers. I believe that Yancey County has angels' wings wrapped around them. And I hope this story gives you hope to know that people, at least in this endeavor, have met across politics, religion, and, uh, and I, I wanted you to know it's possible. It's not only possible, it's happening. And I have every faith, all of us that love Yancey County, can figure this out.
Is there, is it a delay? A little delay? Is it stopped? We don't wanna start her time before that delay.
Oh, I don't worry about it.
I mean, no, I'm just saying, is the delay on the thing out there done?
She just finished talking.
Oh, okay.
On YouTube.
I think that, can you hear me through this mask? Okay. I think that some of you know that my mom and dad bought a farm here in Yancey County a half a century ago. My mom and dad had lived on Red Lines during the depression. And when they came to Yancey County, they brought their hearts here because they really admired and loved the fact that Yancey County, more than any other place they'd been, had the unique qualities of deep faith, neighbors, helping neighbors in the face of hardships and natural disasters. And I think whatever Joy just said was just a little bit of a delay there. That's an example of that. People coming across all differences to be able to help when we're facing a common issue. We've now been here a decade and we're all aware, we came to help save the farm of development. We're all aware of the rising cases here and the stress our businesses are under. My plea and request to you today is not about asking you to become the mask police or to enforce the governor's mandate in a heavy-handed way. It's not about our freedom to choose or not to choose to wear a mask or face coverings. In fact, it's not about opposing sides at all. It is about, however it seems to me, our encouraging our residents and our visitors who are coming in from hot spot states to use our right to choose to honor this incredible heritage that I have also come to love as I have come to spend my life and the rest of my life here in Yancey County. It's about our making the choice to honor that heritage. And to me, it's about our faith in each other's good hearts and caring for the well-being of the whole community. I've come in this time to love this community. We need our businesses to survive and thrive. And many older people, it's a shock to me that David, sitting out there, is eighty-two years old and I'm seventy-six, who could have imagined with lung issues? But many older people, as well as people of all ages with health issues, are concerned about being able to come out of our homes and back into town. We wanna come back to fully participate in the life of this town and to continue to patronize and invest in our local businesses. We love being regulars. We really do. We love being regulars. So tonight, I would like to ask for your help as our local government and other government agencies here in our town to invest resources, time, money, skill in widespread community education and common messaging. We also need inspiring materials and creative ways to invite everyone who enters our town or our businesses to join us as a community in adopting the very few simple practices that our health departments or our health state level is calling the good W's. To slow down the spread. I do believe, and now I'm wrapping up, I believe that we have the, we really have the chance to show the larger world what a small community can accomplish when we put our minds and hearts to it. Not forcing anybody, but inviting everybody to be a part of it. We and many others of our peers, colleagues, people we've known for years in this town are ready to help in any way that we can.
Good evening. I'm John Ward. Uh, my wife Wendy and I bought a home here about fourteen years ago. Uh, we did that because we loved the area and loved people we met. We moved around the area and continued to. I came from a big medical school in Texas, uh, where I work in public health primarily. And so I have some understanding of what we're facing right now. Uh, I sent you a letter. You know, you've got a lot of letters or emails. And I hope you'll get a chance to look at it at some point. Uh, the governor took a lot of burden off what I talked about in the letter and, and for you. But I just wanna make two points, uh, from that. The first is, I think, in dealing with some of the controversy about, uh, adhering to social norms and, uh, wearing masks, that we'll do better if we try to create a sense of a new social norm rather than adherence to a set of ordinances and executive orders, uh, so that people feel like they've made a choice to do the right thing to help tamp down the, the level of, uh, spread of COVID-19. Uh, the other thing is, I think it can be very useful for you as leaders of the community to do the best you can to set a good example for folks. So that they see and hear that you see this as important and you're doing the right things yourselves, uh, to try to limit the spread of the disease. Then I think we can all get out and enjoy our lives together. Thank you.
What was that?
John Ward.
Me. Certainly, uh, due to your time, so get on with my three minutes. When I left you back in March, we had had the flood in nineteen seventy-seven. I had made my way to the water plant. And I think I gave you a handout pen and said I'd be back. One of the points to be made with handouts is that we have two million gallon storage tanks came about nineteen seventy-two. And in flood in nineteen seventy-seven, the morning when I arrived at the water plant, eleven, one million, one hundred thousand gallons of that water that I had left in there in nineteen forty-four had ran out into Little Crab Creek Creek. I've been here to put a ton of fuel up inside. And so I just wanted to go over some occasions where we had unusual water circumstances in my history. One is long about nineteen seventy, seventy-six or eight, Bill Atkins on the two-story apartment building on Longview Drive had caught on fire. Well, I'd been working at the water plant. I'd been studying pumping some pump, operating the fire department. So I got to characterize. We put about thirty thousand gallon water on that fire. It wasn't really that big a building. Well, and as we go on, uh, of course, we had two million gallon storage, so that shouldn't have been a problem. We'd had other fires in the town that took a tremendous amount of water. Had one out of town that took a lot of water, semi-buildings and wild. That was as much fire as I've ever actually seen on a place at one time. We had the, uh, the Blue Ridge Hardware Store, July nineteen ninety-seven. And I'm not really sure how much water was used that night because it wasn't very big. We also had the, uh, Country Store Fire, which was nineteen eighty-one, I believe. And that took a tremendous amount of water. We survived all of it. Now, back in about nineteen seventy-one, when Ben Franklin, Ray Brothers, and Caroline Tireburn burned down right behind this building, and then this building didn't burn, which is certainly a, gosh, I don't know. I respect the fellows that fought that fire that didn't have this town. We didn't get help that night, um, Pensacola and West Yancey and New Dale and South Oak, there in Ohio, Hope, we got it from Spruce Fire, Mars Hill, and Marshall. But the water was gone. At that time, we had some two hundred and seventy-five thousand gallon storage. That prior to the two million gallon water. So there, you know, there can be an occasion where you can use that water. Part of that wasn't three minutes. I don't know. Keep it happy with the water. I think you was on time to lay that down. But I will hurry. When I used to pump gas for Russell Fox's dad down there, Bill Arwood was a big sheriff for Kermit and Donald Williams. He would stop on his way home every afternoon, get his car there. He's going to get a price free. Didn't hold to the gallon. And I often wondered, Bill, how can you stop here every day? Get gas. Bill told me one thing. He said it don't cost no more to keep it full than it does keep it empty. Don't cost no more to keep it full than it does keep it empty. Now, my point about your handout, the two million gallon tank, you'll notice it, the tank is twenty-eight feet and high. And if you call up the water plant and you say, how much water? Somebody's probably gonna tell you, you got fourteen feet, you got eighteen feet, Dylan, is that right? Twenty-two feet. Twenty-two feet. So the point being about it don't take no more to keep it full than it does keep it empty is this. If you check on that, and you check on that historically, that tank should be kept somewhere close to full. If it's not being, there should be a policy that says, we need to keep this much water on hand. Because for every reason you might get, it don't take no more to keep it full than it does keep it empty. You're going to do so much water, so you need to keep an eye on that. That's what I would suggest. Uh, I thank y'all for being here. I thank you for your work on the bench. I thank you for your work with Jamie on the EDC. And I hope y'all have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
That's all.
Well, our in-person public comments do have some. We do have. We did get, um, on the issue of masks, ordinance discussion, two hundred and fifty-eight total emails, multiple telephone calls. And part of that had to do with, mine's phone ringing. Part of that had to do with, uh, the fact that some incorrect information got put out on the WKYK by a group that was not part of the town that said we would be considering an actual ordinance tonight. And everybody needed to get their email in by twelve o'clock. So yesterday was a busy morning. I have spoken with, um, people at WKYK and they have assured me that in the future, if there's information about what the town council is doing or going to be doing, that they will call me to get actual qualification that, that is something that's happening. I do have one public comment from, from our public comment email that has nothing to do with masks. And we'll probably be able to make this person happy later on in the meeting. Uh, this is from Crystal Boone. Um, is there not a text message option to be notified if there is a boil water advisory? Otherwise, how are we supposed to know there is an advisory unless we frequent social media and or listen to WKYK? I was told today by a family member that just happened to see a Facebook post. Thanks. And the rest is just a sampling of the different masks, um, from both sides in no particular order. Um, all of the emails will be uploaded onto our website so that, um, people who want to go there and read them, they can. They'll be part of tonight's package of information that always goes up. First one is from Kelly Miller, town council. I would like to share my opinion on masks in public places. Do not like the idea of requiring this as it creates even more hardship on many people in an already difficult time. Yes, this virus is real, but so are many other viruses that are around consistently with no requirement of a mask. We should be able to make the best decisions for our family without being told what would be best for our families. If people want to wear masks, then please do so. If they do not want to or cannot wear masks, then that should be their decision as well without interference from government, state, or local leaders. America was founded on freedom. Please don't jeopardize that by forcing a truly unenforceable decision as everyone has different circumstances they must deal with during this already difficult time. Thanks for your time. Megan Hedrick writes, um, to him it may concern making masks mandatory in the town of Burnsville is unnecessary. Actually work at Mission Hospital in Asheville and the virus is either not talked about anymore or it is taken as not a big deal because most populations do recover unless they are vulnerable with some other respiratory or long-term illness. Making masks mandatory is taking away the rights of citizens of this town and will only cause more trouble than it's worth. I feel recommending masks is completely fair, but enforcing wearing masks as a rule you know will be broken is a waste of time, very uncalled for, and against our constitutional rights as citizens. Please take my thoughts into consideration. Lance Taylor, to him it may concern, I'm a resident of Pensacola and in my early seventies. I am in good health. My concern is regarding precautions that we all can take to help mitigate coronavirus. How can we not simply wear a face mask in public? Some say it takes away our rights. Our rights are our responsibility to others. I do not want to possibly sicken anyone. A simple act of kindness and recognition of a person's chance at a good and healthy life, a simple action on my part to wear masks to help protect others. Please, for all our sakes, in your planning and concerns for our community, small and large, take action that protects our friends and neighbors and our families. Thank you for your consideration and may we all stay healthy. John Silver, town leaders, as a local businessperson, it's been encouraging to see most of our patrons respect and abide by social distancing guidelines at our establishment. We're particularly lucky in that we have a lot of space for people to spread out and we have maintained only minimal seating inside. Our staff have expressed to me that they feel safe at this time. Some patrons wear masks when they order, others don't. Without getting into the competing political narratives or the information war of whether masks are effective in preventing the spread of COVID, all that I would ask is if the state mandates masks this week, that our great local police and sheriff's departments enforce the order if for nothing more than to avoid putting our local businesses in the impossible position of being forced to choose a side in a political divide this subject has morphed into. If a state mask mandate is not enforced on the local level, some will abide by it while others will disregard it. Those who enforce it within their own establishment because they are trying to abide by state mandate will be punished financially if other establishments in town do not abide. This will fragment and further divide our town into shaming and writing off some businesses based on perceived political differences on both sides. Let's be consistent in whatever is enforced so that we can all get through this together. Diana Robinson, I understand everyone's concern about this virus. I have read many statements for and against wearing masks. I personally believe there's no real proof that wearing masks is a hundred percent way of preventing this virus. Every person has the right to wear masks or not at this time. If this becomes mandated in our county, then I will take my business elsewhere. Kirsten Fox, I'm a twenty-seven-year-old woman with a daughter, a stepdaughter, and one on the way. Every day, I become more and more scared to go out in public because it seems to me no one is wearing their mask. Now, I know wearing a mask does not completely stop the spread of COVID-19, but it definitely slows it down. It seems people have gone back to a pre-pandemic attitude and are pretending everything is okay as the case numbers in Yancey continue to rise. Yes, I am fully aware that it doesn't kill everyone that gets it, that a lot of people are asymptomatic and most aren't even ending up in a hospital. But on the off chance my daughter, who has asthma, gets it, I would be furious because it is preventable. This is just about keeping healthy people. This isn't just about keeping healthy people healthy. It's about keeping everyone healthy. And I'd really like to see Burnsville step up in this regard. People need to be wearing their masks. People need to recognize the severity of COVID-19. Do the right thing, Burnsville. Our ma'as and papas' lives are dependent on you. Stephanie Joyce, I absolutely do not agree with implementing a mask ordinance in the town of Burnsville. The panic pushing has gone on long enough. Let us please keep our town a place of common sense and peace and let us get back to some semblance of normalcy. Wash your hands thoroughly and often. Don't get in other people's personal space. Go on with your life. I beg you to put a stop to this talk of forcing citizens to wear masks. Cassie Westbrook, in response to the Facebook post about hearing comments regarding mandatory face masks, I'd like to send my opinion. I'm absolutely against mandatory face masks. Mandatory takes away our right to choose what we feel is best for our family. It also completely disregards families with children who may not keep one on, but must come along to a store. It also completely disregards families with children who may not keep one on, but must come along to a store, but must come along to a store. I think adults should be smart enough to make good decisions for their own families without government involvement to the point of what to put on our bodies. On a personal level, I am severely claustrophobic and feel immense panic to wear one. So for now, I have the right not to. It's really not about being defiant or disrespectful or any other thing that non-mask people have been labeled. So many of us just simply can't. Therefore, I try my best to adhere to the other guidelines and not to be close to anyone because I know some do not agree with my choice not to wear one. But that's just it, it should be my choice, don't take away that choice. You will see nothing but defiance and wider division by trying to make people do what you want them to do instead of what they choose. And this one comes from Patty Smith, she has pictures of the signs that are up in Weaverville. The three Ws, Wear, Wait, and Wash. Um, I'm sorry for the delay in sending this. Um, I'm writing this after the governor's issuance of statewide mandatory mask-wearing order. I do not think my comments are moot. I wanted to send pictures of signs provided by the town of Weaverville to businesses and others for their windows and lawns. There's also a large banner at the entrance of town and maybe other entrances. People are not taking COVID-19 seriously, it has become political, it does not matter who, why, or how it happened. The important thing is that my wearing a mask protects you from me, and you wearing a mask protects me from you. What we as individuals want to do or not do is irrelevant because mask-wearing is not about each of us and our individual choice, it's about protecting our neighbor. The sooner and longer and more strictly we comply, the faster we can say goodbye to COVID-19. This one is from Leslie Pardue. I'm writing in support of requiring masks in Burnsville. I have been doing much of my shopping in places where folks are wearing masks in other towns because so few wear them in Burnsville. I would rather be able to shop in Burnsville and support local business. Sheila Hill McCurry, I do not agree with the idea of mandatory masks in public places in Burnsville. I recently shared an article on Facebook regarding the different types of masks. It states how three different types of masks are different, N-ninety-five, surgical, and cloth. The N-ninety-five is for contamination with no filtration. Surgical mask is for sterile areas and can easily clog, needs to be thrown away every thirty minutes or so. Cloth mask can make you sick if worn for a long period of time. They must be washed often because they can trap mildew and mold in them. The article I shared goes more into detail, and it's from OSHA, who should have the facts and not fiction. I do believe that hand washing and using hand sanitizers is a good thing, using Clorox or bleach sprays are very helpful in getting rid of germs at home. I don't think that mandatory masks are a good option for this town. Mike and Sandra Orr, we support an ordinance that the town of Burnsville require the use of face masks for people in public spaces indoors. We understand there is resistance to our opinion, but also understand that masks have proven efficacy and are documented to save lives. We further understand that COVID-19 has undeniably linked our mutual behaviors to the health of all people. The obvious rise to known COVID cases in Yancey County makes this the right time to move forward. Casey Burleson, to whom it may concern, I believe there should be no mask ordinance. We still live in America where we are free. If someone is afraid of this virus, they should wear a mask, if they want to, and feel free to protect themselves. All the rest of us, on the other hand, who think this is all a ridiculous infringement upon our rights, should be free to choose not to wear a mask. I can assure you that I will not be shopping in Burnsville if I'm required to wear a mask. I will take my business to an area where people have some sense. Beth Cloke, I think I'm pronouncing that right. In my opinion, mandating mask-wearing in our town will be financially detrimental to our businesses. I personally have such bad allergies that I cannot safely wear a mask. My nasal passages swell and restrict air. A mask is dangerous to my oxygen levels. Businesses have had enough rules and mandates to deal with. They can and should make their own choice to require or not require masks, and customers can choose whether to shop there or elsewhere. If closing, we can keep revenue in our town by not further imposing mandates on our citizens, or we can require masks everywhere and watch our business revenues go to Irwin and Johnson City. I don't know if there are a few more. Um... This one doesn't have a name. Stephen Breedenhoff, M.D., M.P.H., I urge the council to adopt requirements similar to other North Carolina cities and counties to promote wearing masks and maintain social distance in public spaces. Personal safety is a prime factor in choosing where and when to engage in needed commercial activity, especially for those facing increased risks associated with coronavirus infection. Currently, cities such as Asheville and Boone enjoy a competitive advantage resulting from widespread use of face masks, which have been shown to reduce the spread of the virus. Requiring use of masks and proper social distancing give local businesses a boost in assuring potential customers that their establishment and clientele are doing everything possible to maintain a safe and inviting environment. Merchants acting individually lack the influence to achieve the universally, the universality needed to make the community at large as safe as possible. This is a public concern requiring concerted action by public officials. I speak to this question with considerable professional experience and authority. The majority of my career, I practiced and taught medicine at Duke in Durham. Since moving to the mountains, I have served as Chair of the Infection Control at both Blue Bridge Regional Hospital and Appalachian Healthcare System in Boone. These proposed measures are neither capricious nor unduly burdensome in themselves, and they strengthen the image of our local business community as committed to our mutual safety. Darlene Wells, I appreciate your concern for my health, but it's my responsibility, as it has always been. Masks, as you have read in many articles, are not helpful when it concerns viruses such as COVID-19. You will only be creating more hardship on the locally-owned stores. We are so very close to other counties and states where we would not have to shop locally with masks. Our health is not the government's concern, no mask. The last one already is from Katie Carlin. I'm writing to express my opinion as a merchant on Main Street during a defining moment in our town's history. I love the town of Burnsville and have made it my home for thirty-three years. These mountains are so special. The beauty and creative resources here are our treasure. Even during a pandemic, we must nourish the privilege of being the recipients of gifts of this place called Burnsville. It is our culture, it is our place, it is our home. When the governor opened the state for retail stores to open for business, it was very challenging. I personally made the rules for the Grapevine due to my own health history of asthma and a family history of lung cancer. The Grapevine requires that customers wear masks, wash their hands before entering the store. It is far from perfect, but those are the rules that we impose to feel safe with our customers. The original employees of the Grapevine are all over seventy years old and no longer work here. It is sad and challenging as these women made the spirit of the store. Customers have challenged me personally and have challenged the new employees that work at the store because they do not want to wear masks. We have, or believe they are not effective. We have lost business due to our requirements for masks, and yet I feel my health and the health of our employees comes before everything else. But this is personal, and I do not feel that it is necessary for other stores to require masks. Uh, to be clear, I believe that each business needs to set their own protocols for how they wish to proceed. It's challenging to imagine that we will survive this pandemic as businesses without the support of locals, outsiders, and newcomers. I have observed the confusion that people feel when they come into the store. Some refuse to wear a mask, others don't have one, and then some share their opinions about how masks are not effective. It is also sad to think of Burnsville with more vacant businesses, including my own. I do not have answers as to how to move forward as a community, a town, or however else we name ourselves. What I do know, however, is that we need to create a common thread and build on it piece by piece. Because the town is worth it, the merchants are worth it, and the people who make up this great place are worthy of what has been created here. To be clear, here is my opinion. The merchants are on the front line of anger and public confusion. Do not think mandating rules and restrictions is effective. Unless it comes from the governor, allow each business to chart their own course with the parameters of the governor's orders. Senior hours or senior shopping hours, and those who wish to shop with less risk is a great solution for Burnsville residents and visitors from out of state. I do not feel that places like Boone or Asheville are having great success by mandating rules for merchants. How can we make it clear and easy for people to feel safe in Burnsville and shop in Burnsville? Some kind of statement, town statement for visitors to suggest that they be kind to merchants and respect our beautiful town during the pandemic. It could be as simple as a small sign. Let's teach people to be kind, somehow, some way, Burnsville will be kind bumper stickers. I can attest to having witnessed many unkind behaviors in customers and visitors who project their anger on merchants and employees. We are tired and need the support of everyone to help us survive. And like I said, the rest will be, I think, for everyone to see. And the council already has two-hundred-and-fifty-eight emails. I think there were ninety-five in favor and a hundred-and-sixty-three in opposition.
Do you think that some people have conflated us with the county? Are they confusing us with the county with some of those?
With, most of the emails we received by far and away were from county residents.
That's what I thought, I mean, they are.
But, and there were a few that actually addressed it to the county.
Businesses, but they are kind of conflating us like that. I mean, I think they're thinking of us, kind of as a, as making decisions for the county too, I mean, I get that idea that we have. But it doesn't matter, but I'm, I'm thinking that, that some people are thinking of us as making a decision that's going to affect the whole county as well. It is in that, the shops, people are kind of coming out of the county into Burnsville to shop, but somehow I get the drift. If they think of us as making a decision that's going to, somehow, be county-wide, but I don't, I mean, if we were, you know, just get that idea.
That's all, public comment.
All right, so that concludes the public comment section. Excuse me. We'll move on to the next, I'm on the agenda. Yes, um, consideration of the minutes on my board meeting at two forty-four. Does the motion to adopt the minutes as read?
I'm making the motion to adopt the minutes as read.
Second, so are we in agreement with the minutes on three this way? Uh, hold on, I know that we're going to go to the public hearing on economic appropriations and the signage.
There wasn't anybody that signed up for any of our public views, so you just need to open, open the hearing, you don't need a motion, it's, it's on the agenda. Just open it at whatever time it is.
Well, how long do we sit here if we don't have anybody to sign up?
You just need to open it at nine sixty-four thirty and close it at six forty-four.
Okay, all right, we'll now open the, the public hearing on the economic appropriations. Uh, and we'll, for a minute, uh, someone to be inspired to speak. I want to close the public hearing on economic appropriations and go to the public hearing on our fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget. We'll approve the budget on that, we'll make sure Leslie when he comes, but public has had the opportunity to look at the budget and to speak accordingly, and no one has signed up. So, uh, we will now close that public hearing since we have no one to attend, I wish you to speak. Okay, we will move to item number six, which is the adoption of a twenty-twenty-one budget ordinance uh, and the budget, which we will need a motion and a vote, but I kneel to, uh, Leslie, is there anything you wish to say? Kind of thoughts before we make the motion?
Well, I mean, since we've been doing it, we've got early starts, and it's kind of been done, we've taken a while. And it's very slim, I mean, it's just, you know, everything is kind of far back as we can and try and just be conservative because we're not sure how it's going to go, and we're just going to, like, pause it and kind of sort of, it's like... There's no changes that are from what you've seen, there's nothing.
We're giving up the water rate in case it breaks down, and then, uh, holy, salaries will be adjusted at the two-point-six percent cost of living. Is there anything else that you particularly stand out?
Um, we're going to do a carryover on the elevator, you know, money, uh, that's my answer.
Helping this, we just want to get a little bit of, the elevator started and done. I wonder whether you have any comments to add to that. One, like, thank you, Leslie, for working very hard, you have gathered on my part.
And Jamie worked very hard too.
I thought I could do it, they're acting so hot, yes.
And the department heads worked hard.
Yes.
They really did, it was a good effort.
Well, it, I mean, I think having Heather to, uh, steer us is just been an easier and smoother operation for us as the board to, to review the budget.
Absolutely.
And so, thank you very much.
Yeah.
So, if there are no other questions or comments, then I'll make a motion and a vote.
I'm making a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Second, are we all in agreement? We are, motion is in man's list. Thank you very much, Erica, thank you, the folks who worked very hard. Pardon me. Uh, we have a, the, uh, the resolution authorizing the town of Burnsville to engage in electronic payments, which is under a general statute. And, uh, excuse me, I'm a little bit, um, so, are there any questions or comments regarding, um, this resolution? Put your motion and a vote. Certainly quite tonight, um, okay, so is there a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the town of Burnsville to engage in electronic payments? It's defined by North Carolina General Statute one fifty-nine bash twenty-eight.
Hadn't we been making some electronic payment?
We have, but the state requires, the state requires that we adopt a motion and a set of policies, guidelines, because electronic payments, credit card payments cannot be pre-audited by the financial officer.
Right, but it's not something that's new to us exactly.
No, but it, and it is allowed, we have these procedures in place.
And it's, it's nice that we do have this available for our customers, uh, right.
But this is not, this is not for taking payments, say, for water, this is, just to be clear, this is for when staff needs to purchase something and uses a credit card or buys it over the internet or something like that. There has to be a policy surrounding, how we make sure we've got that money budgeted.
There's rules and regulations on how we go about that, pardon for confusing too. Okay, so, uh, is there a motion for us to adopt this, uh, authorizing the town of Burnsville to engage in electronic payments?
So, you'll make that motion, do you?
There a second?
Last second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? So, the, the resolution carries, thank you very much. Um, Heather, I'm going, she works so hard on our town of Burnsville, human policy. Do you want to just say a few words about that before we adopt the resolution, or?
Um, I'll just say that, you know, we've been working on this for well over months now. Um, and staff has had an opportunity to see it and read it and make comments and suggestions. Um, we did, um, adopt formally in this policy some of the practices we had been using. Um, but it is recommended and required as best practices. We have some kind of a written document, um, guiding our policy for how we purchase and contract um, and make payments, much along the lines of what we were talking about with this, um... with this, um, resolution you just adopted. So this, this does contain those policy steps for guidance on doing that. And, um, I don't think the town had had sort of a formal policy that everybody could follow uniformly, uh, and, and refer to if they had questions. Um, and so, this is what we've come up with. We think it's a pretty good set of guidelines.
Well, it certainly was thorough. More than.
Well, we tried to think of everything, but we may not have everything, but. But we, we can always, we can always come back in a minute. It is this policy, but.
Well, I would have been smart enough. It shows a lot of time and effort, Heather, and thank you very much. So, is there a motion that we, um, adopt this?
I'll make that motion also.
I second it.
Okay, are we all in agreement? Y'all, okay. Thank you very much. So, we now have our guidelines. We'll be sure to follow it. Um, we'll move on now to item number nine. Um, we're going to look at the adoption, um, of the closeout documents for the project that relates to our safety BG grant, which deals with the Peterson trailer park. And then to adopt those documents as well as, uh, given me the authority to sign out, just to sign the closeout of these documents for the Peterson trailer park.
In this, we had the public hearing at our last.
In June.
In June, uh, well, in the first of June, we're still in June. Seems like a long time, but, and these are the, the documents Michelle Ball needs to just close this grant.
Yes. So, we need to, uh, adopt, we need a motion to, uh, for adoption of the closeout documents for the Peterson trailer park and, uh, at the same time also giving me the authority to sign the closeout documents.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
To Russell, are we all in agreement? We are. Okay, so that's good to finally get that one done. Seems like it's been for a while. Um, our next item is number, number 10. Uh, we have proposed amendments to the, to the town of Burnsville sign, sign ordinance. So we first need to, need the adoption of the plan consistency statement. Um, we had it in the packet. We need to adopt that before we move on to adopt the amendment. So, are there any questions about that?
We did have a public hearing at our last meeting for this also, um, and planning has, has, um, reviewed and made a recommendation to adopt these changes.
So, uh, that gets us back to, to the adoption of the plan consistency statement. Uh, is there a motion to, for the adoption of the plan consistency statement? I moved it.
Go ahead. Somebody would like to.
No, I don't.
Go ahead, Jamie.
I was just going to say, I make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
There is.
Yes, I do recognize your vote, multiple votes. Okay, so, okay, so a second, uh, we all in agreement? So, it's carried. Uh, then we, that moves us since we've approved that, we move on to the adoption, uh, excuse me, of the amendments. Need a motion, uh, kind of wrote on that, which deals with the, uh, text amendments to the zoning ordinances.
This is to the sign.
Oh, did I say, am I?
That's okay.
Am I? Oh, I'm still on the sign.
Still on the sign.
Good Lord, yes, number 10. So, again, uh, the adoption of the amendment, uh, dealing with the sign ordinance. I'll take that motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, are we in agreement with that? Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to number 11. We act for the, the town of Burnsville zoning ordinance. We must first adopt the plan consistency statement dealing with the town of Burnsville zoning ordinance. So, have a chance to review that. So, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Russell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, are we in agreement, unanimous? Are. Thank you very much. And the second part of that is that we adopt the amendments to the sign ordinance itself.
Non-ordinances.
It's confusing. We've been at this since April. It's all done and all the stuff.
Well, if you understood what I've tried to say, is there a motion?
I like that motion too.
And I'll second it.
Are, are we in agreement? Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Heather. You're a good caller, decides in the next week. Um, so that concludes number 11, and that moves us to our administrators update, which is none other than me, Heather.
I'm Bebrief, because we've been here, uh, COVID-19 update, didn't want to just touch on the governor's new executive order 147 that left us in phase two for another three weeks. It begins tomorrow, um, the 26th at 5:00 PM and will go until, uh, July 17th. Um, it does mandate the wearing of face coverings in, uh, certain indoor facilities, including retail businesses, um, and pull it out here so I can make sure I did not read it incorrectly. Retail businesses, there's a lot of where it has in this one. Retail businesses, restaurants, in personal care, grooming and tattoo businesses, childcare facilities, day camps, overnight camps. In state government, um, and then there is a recommendation that other local government agencies adopt similar policies that require face coverings. Uh, in transportation, uh, if you are, um, at bus stops, train stations, those sorts of things. In certain high-density occupational settings, such as factories, um, in meat and poultry processing plants, long-term care facilities and other healthcare settings. There are exceptions, and I do want to touch on them. We've got a lot of emails about this. There are exceptions to the requirement to wear face coverings, um, if you have medical or behavioral condition or disability, um, you're under 11 years of age, um, active, when you're actively eating or drinking, when you're strenuously exercising, um, if you're seeking to communicate with someone who is hearing impaired and they need to see your mouth in giving a speech or a broadcast or to an audience, um, if you're working at home or you're in your personal vehicle, if you're temp, temporarily removing face covering to secure government or medical services for identification purposes, would be at risk from wearing a face covering at work as determined by local, state or federal regulations, um, has found, if someone finds their face covering is impeding visibility to operate equipment or a vehicle, or if you're a child whose parent, guardian or responsible person has been unable to place the face covering safely on your, on your face, um, children under two should not wear face coverings. Um, anyone who declines to wear a face covering for these reasons should not be required to produce documentation or any other proof of condition. We, and in talking about the businesses specifically, um, it's not mandated that there's any enforcement for individuals. The enforcement would come for the business operators. Um, and businesses, if you have someone who is not wearing a face covering in your business and you want them to, and you ask them to leave and they don't, then you have the right to call law enforcement, um, and that would be considered trespass. That's pretty much, other than some, some increases to access to testing, um, and mitigation measures for long-term care facilities, other than, you know, extending, uh, phase two, that's what this was, hadn't was.
Heather, I wonder, I had two IRA people, I could have done my stuff yesterday, and I sent them, uh, the link, uh, frequently asked questions for executive order number 147, and they, uh, I think they opened their eyes more clearly, and I wonder if we could post that link on that.
We have. We've already, Chad, it's already posted, but order and, and a key on the, on the website. Um, and I have talked with staff, it is not mandated by the order, um, beyond, you know, one of the, one of the businesses or facilities that is, um, required in the order. So, um, we have talked with staff about if they have to go into businesses or in places where they are talking directly with, um, citizens, um, that they will wear face covering, we're providing them with the blue mask that Chad has on, Leslie has on, yeah, um, to do that. Um, and we are, uh, I think Dylan has worked out where his, his crew, which are the ones that would travel the most together in vehicles, are able to separate into, there's a two? Am I right?
Two.
And use separate vehicles to travel to and from their work sites. Um, so we're doing everything we can to social distance. Of course, in town hall, we have the contactless window arrangement set up, where we've got six feet of social distancing and then a tray that they will slide through the glass, plexiglass window. And we actually have, I think Shane maybe, somebody built.
Yeah.
Some blocks that just allow the window to be open enough for the tray to slide through. And of course, we are reminding people, you know, they can make payments in other ways without coming in, and we have the floors marked so that people will wait six feet apart. So, we think we're in compliance.
Well, Chad, thank you for getting this on our website, because I do think that people will take time to read it, maybe they'll read it twice before they get hostile.
We also have, have been working and today got a call from Alan Cook with the, um, Maitland Community College Business Outreach Program over there. And I know Jamie's been involved, and Jamie DeVal at the chamber, we've talked, all of us have talked about this situation, and Brian, um, with, with law enforcement too. And I believe we set a Zoom call with, um, the businesses for.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 30th, it's coming Tuesday, the 30th, 10:00 AM. We're going to get to them some information now. Um, Brian worked on this flyer, which would be available to businesses if they wanted, you know, after we talk to them and see where they're at and what their, um, ideas are, um, you know, we would be able to help supply them with signage, uniform signage for their doors. Um, I think EDC has prepared a number of masks in the chamber would be given them out to businesses that wanted to have some available, that people that maybe showed up without masks and wanted to wear masks, or they'd wanted to wear masks. Um, but we'll be covering a lot of, you know, issues with them about not only the order, but what Maitland has available to help them with their business, what EDC has available, um, and answer some of those things and point out some issues.
Well, you know, we're closing out at the right time, and we've been open now, we've opened to the public when phase two went in. And of course Claudette and I are both old and both have issues. And, uh, I thought our hell was going to kill me when I said, yeah, I'm going down there. So, but I have these N95 masks, but I didn't begin with. So I was wearing the mask makers masks. And, um, so, the mask makers have kept us in masks, and we have a basket. And when people come in, they don't have a mask, but most do. They'll come in not wearing the mask, but they have them on their being somewhere, and they'll produce them. We'll just say, do you have a mask? Yeah, it's in here somewhere, back here or something. Nobody has been offended, except for Sheila Hill. I see now why Sheila didn't stay. And we'll say, well, we'll provide you with one. And they'll say, oh, how much do they cost? Well, they're free. The mask makers make them for us. Well, that's just one. Everybody loves them because they don't have the elastic most often, so they tie. We've even had people give us a donation because they love the mask. All these people come out of state, they're fantastic. So we run through them like, you know, and they keep bringing more. And, um, until, or yesterday, we flat ran out and there weren't any more. So anyway, but this lady from the history association, she said, Amy, there's these masks, you can pick up like, and I reckon she meant, you can get them over at Spruce Park, was she talking at the hospital or where? Get them like a hundred or so, or, she said, Amy, you can go on the website, she said, get this.
Avery Mitchell.
Was she talking at the hospital? Was she talking?
She was talking about.
I thought she was talking about that help.
Yeah.
So I think she gave the businesses or whatever, because I think that's always coming or whatever. But anyway, nobody has been hostile about it, except Sheila didn't stay. And, um, they've always been so great, everybody's been so gracious. And, um, except one little lady came in today and she said, I said, do you have a mask? And she said, no. And I said, well, we have one right here for you. And she took it, but she said, I don't live with this stuff. And I said, well, we do. Anyway, she took one, and when she left, she took hers with her. I said, well, you know, the governor has mandated wearing a mask, so, you know, you might need it. She did take it with her. But everybody has been very gracious. Nobody has turned on their, you know, and left, except Sheila. You know, I always, I've known Sheila all her life. She's, um, she used to be the A-hole, you know? And she works at, um, I think she works at the clinic now, but she used to work at Maitland. But anyway, but everybody has been very gracious, but Claudette and I just decided, we, like, Katie are old, we both have health issues, but we have to do this job we're doing. We're not going to risk our, I don't want to be intubated. I don't want to be in a respirator. And so we just decided by dying, that was going to be our rule, and we just put it on the door, masks required. And it'd be very nice for it. Yeah, and they don't want to, they don't have to. But we're just there to them rarely, and that's the way it is. But most people just love the huge jumps, so they'll put that above, they'll help, well, they'll put that above preferences. Yeah, their preference, their freedom of choice. They'll wear the dark thing, it can easily bring it some too. But anyway, I mean, you know, they've been nice. And, you know, they've loved it, it's nice. And I'll have to say this too, some people have come in and said, well, here you have the masks, and they come just to get the masks, because, and they, they're so typical to be able to get a mask, and a lot of them are people who just can't really afford masks or otherwise. It has been served for, so I'll have to hand that. Well, back to my little.
That's really all that I have at this time. We'll keep you updated on, you know, how this moves forward, but we hope to be able to, you know, help our businesses and our, and our residents, um, move, move forward in this new phase, cause or what it's being called.
Heather, you've been really slammed lately with the law, and it's like, you know, kept your disposition, my average, with a sense of humor, but we know, we know very well from your mother and your grandmother and your grandkids, so it has served you well during this difficult time. Um, we'll move on now to our department updates, and we'll, Jean will wait, you can report to us about, uh, the language tax.
Well, y'all have the report from this month, and, um, we've got a little less than 20,000 to collect for this year, and we have two accounts that are being garnished, so. And we have two accounts that are being garnished, so that's all I have.
Uh, Leslie.
Okay, um, I sent out the budget versus actual, um, in the overtime report. Next, we'll move on to the, um, the housekeeping cleanup for the budget amendment. And I just tried to pick some lines that actually were, you know, over, instead of just going and cleaning out several. But just trying to pick up one per department and tried to beat that line up. And at the start of it though, we're gonna start with increased revenues, which, I mean, we were having a really good year. But, um, I mean, surprisingly, the, the fire tax is up by twenty-one thousand, uh, one ninety-four. Then the return of sales taxes at twenty-one thousand, one eighty-one, vehicle tax was over ninety-three hundred dollars. ABC actually had more, but I just used that line to actually balance the rest of it. So I increased that by thirteen thousand nine forty-six. Then down here on the expenditure adjustments, which is kind of just like the line item transfer. And the building inspector, you know, we've, um, had Brian doing the code enforcement, doing this, so there's seventy-four hundred in there. And to offset, I'm actually increasing his salary line, because that's how, what we done. And, and so the health insurance line, we're increasing that by five thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The code enforcement salary part for the chief by fourteen, five sixty. And contribution to capital outlay, I'm increasing, but in the fire department there. Because we have, we have pulled money every which way we can to, to put in this account for this building. And same deal, the five thirty-one, um, seventy-four hundred, capital outlay, increasing that by twenty-one thousand, one ninety-four, which is honestly just the offset of the first line. Um, equipment maintenance and repair on the street side, twenty-five hundred, just to be safe and not have anything, you know, come back and hit me with it. Um, contracted services, just in case, the, you know, there's anything else in there, but I should have enough for one more month, because she'll pull, pull that back. Fifteen hundred dollars, and then the health insurance line, fifteen thousand, just because that actually needs to be increased somewhat. And then down here, um, the sewer, the sewer is over more than the water. So I'm just moving money from the capital outlay on the water side, the thirty-eight ten. And increasing the sewer, the wastewater treatment supplies and materials by twenty-five, so. So it's not as long as it has been before, but I'm, I'm trying, you know, just to make sure we don't have a budget violation, so. I need a motion, yeah, to approve, yes.
Yes, so is there a motion to approve her, uh, her amendments to, if we close out our fiscal year?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, okay, so thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
Good explanation.
Okay, then I go on to the, uh, project ordinances, and I need to amend those. Um, first one we have is the wastewater treatment plant, and you should have that in your packet as well. Um, it's really a very simple, you know, project ordinance. Um, what I had to do was increase thirty-eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for a part that had to be ordered. So I increased this clarifier rehab and changed it to clarifier rehab of miscellaneous parts, and just increased that. Then I had to do, um, a tank cleanout line, because didn't know when we done this, that we were gonna have to have a company come in and actually clean out that tank. So that was fourteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars, so I've just increased, increased it up. And you know, it's coming out of our savings, nothing changed about that, just went up, savings, nearly eighteen thousand.
Now, we, uh, motion to, uh, prevent a.
Yeah.
Project ordinance, wastewater treatment plant, so your motion.
Yeah.
On that, please. So second?
Second.
Then, and are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, okay, now, uh, well, your last amendment deals with the fire department, am I right?
Yes, okay, um, and it is honestly just as closing costs and fees, I had started out at seventy-five hundred dollars. But when we, um, went to close this loan out, it actually costs more than that. We've already paid it, and it's actually reflected in the budget versus actual, but I had to increase this, so I would be in line with it. But, um, it's just up to nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
And that, as far as that goes, it, how UCB's attorneys prepared the paperwork, it didn't have us financing any of the closing costs. Paying them all off, right, so these were costs we were gonna be paying anyway, but now we're not paying interest on them. And we'll receive, on the back end of the loan, we'll save money.
That's the way we want?
That's the way they had it, so we were that close and down to the wire, and after, what, four or five hour closing? Just said, we'll, we'll pay the debt, they were not gonna.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that amendment, please? I'll make that motion, thank you, is there a?
Second.
We are, but I saw you and I, it means we're in trouble. Okay, Hazel, thank you very much, does that wrap you up?
Um, Will, you want me to tell them about that system either?
Yes.
Okay, um, had a conference call, Jackie and I, I talked to a guy. We've got, I got a number from Crystal and Spruce Pine about a phone system that would, you know, do the text or the call alerts. To water and customers, and so we were wanting to look at that, and it's a great deal, it's twelve hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year. Gives you forty-eight thousand calls or texts, so hopefully that will do us, and we'll be able to, you know, notify them quicker. And make it, you know, make it a whole lot easier for everybody.
We'll learn.
Yeah.
Dylan was actually out having to hand deliver letters, twice, this past, in the past seven days. Um, Middle Road, Indian Trail, and Doom Ridge, and that's not very efficient. This will be much better, and we have had people who have come to the town hall and said, you know. I don't look at Facebook, or I don't look at WKYK, you know, I wanna get, other than the person who commented, we've talked with several. This week, have we not, it would be very appreciative of being able to have, and this will allow us to, uh, any kind of an emergency situation. Send out a blast file residence, and let them know what's going on and.
Well, see, that would be me, I don't, I don't listen to the radio, and I don't, you know, I'm not on Facebook, so I'd never even given that a thought. So this is if you need to boil your water or something.
It would be any, any kind of, we've got a war on break, or any type of emergency, or any type of just, we need people to know. Say there's gonna be, for some reason, a change in service, like when trash pickup is gonna be, or anything like.
In your area, that's great, we will get a call that will tell us.
Okay, you're, we're gonna put it on the bills, asking for your phone number, and we're gonna put it on the website, on Facebook, on the radio. But you can help by everybody giving the numbers, and then once you get, you'll have to call or text in a keyword. And that actually starts it, that's how it's gonna go.
That's how you get added to the system.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna build the routes by keywords, so you might be academy or something, you know, if you'll just. So that, if you, you know, we'll let you know, but it's, we're gonna start it, so.
That's great, so, you know, do, do we need to approve that purchase, or is it already a done deal?
It's in.
It's in the budget, I mean, there's plenty of budget for it.
That, that's great.
It's just to tell you about it.
Well, frankly.
Leslie, can you send me some information on that, so I can fit in like I did Jeff's thing, get their, their cell phone?
Yeah.
That'd be cool.
Been really good.
Okay, very good, a lot of people, as you said earlier, will make that one in the Hall of Fame, same as it was. Um, Will, Miles, we are moving on to you now, it's time to talk about the fire department, so, bye-bye.
Thank you, Adam Mayor, uh, the operations side of the department, we've had thirty-five calls since the last meeting. Uh, most of those have been assisted, and had firearms, brought up to two hundred and forty-five so far through here. We have completed an item test on ladder truck and all the ground ladders up to split this way. Also, we have, and a long way, our hose testing is here to do annually. The only thing we have left is a fly line, the pivots, uh, and all the pressure tests that we're doing. One of the turns on, we're doing very well with that, so that should finish up most of our testing for the year. On the building side, I'm sure all of the, uh, excuse me, the notice. Soul condition, uh, and the problem we're having with the soul. And Young and McQueen has, has not worked, we're making, uh, we might make some decisions, we want to do that soul. Ben's email indicates that we need to do something, and it appears to me that option they're leaning for is to see that stable basis, or something. I don't see much other than to go in and try to do that, and have to try to find the problem, I've heard that's in the power department, and it's unbalanced, the business is. Like we need to say about, uh, making some, some, uh, point there.
Does anybody know what you're saying?
I kinda got the gist of it.
Basically, you guys have received a, you know, I sent you out a letter from.
Yeah, I read that.
BLA and the, yeah, and from our engineers, uh, at McGill, and because the dirt is not of the quality, we need it to be.
Yeah, I know what all that was, but what did he say?
He said, he said we're gonna have to do something about the dirt. And he said it looked to him like the best option was, the, the first one that they were, um, that BLA was.
The slurries, what they recommended.
The, the cement stabilization, um, Young McQueen has priced that at a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, there is another option, and I'm gonna let Russell explain more about, um, alternative number two, which is cheaper, but apparently. To install, but then it causes problems down the road when you have to, you know, put piping in and stuff. The way I kind of imagine it.
I got all that.
In layman's terms is, it's like a.
Fiber thing, the textile thing.
Yeah, like a landscape fiber.
I got all that, I read that.
Okay, that's what he said, he was just telling, he was just explaining, he's just explaining all of that to you, so, Russell, boy, he's explaining.
It was a hundred and seventy-four thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, but that can be problems down the road if you try to cut through all that. Second, that first offer.
Yeah, obviously, normally back into, I mean, with thirty-inch stone water, uh, so. That number would probably increase definitely. I mean, it, I guess it, it just is what it is.
What do you feel about, I mean, in conversations I had with Ben about the pricing, you know, obviously. We're not to pay for it, but we'd like to get it cheaper than what's here, do you think that there's?
Well, so. The, the cement price is, it, it's a sudden price, I mean, that's not something that Young McQueen doesn't sell before.
Uh, that's the question I had, did they do that, or did you, somebody else perform that?
That company's out of Knoxville, Tennessee, that's the closest company that actually does that type of work. Um, BLA had, you know, Niles and I, at least I was, under the impression that we were talking about doing the. Just doing one lift, one twelve-inch lift of the cement, and that price was half of the hundred and seventy-four thousand. But BLA is, once, going back to their recommendation, they've asked that two lifts of, of soil cement be done. That's where you come up with the hundred and seventy-four thousand, don't know the.
Is that about the best option?
Sounds good, I just believe.
The, which one would be the most lasting, I guess, or the least, or the, like, the least problems?
I mean, they're, they're both, they're both gonna get you, you know, where, where they're gonna sign off on it. I think that once the cement is done, you're, you, you won't see any change orders. They're on that, as far as with the site work. I, I feel like that if you go with the geogrid and stone, you're gonna see some changes, just because the work is gonna increase. And it's others, and other things, other things that are subgrading, subservice.
So with the, the cement, it was one and done, uh, that's it, one and done.
And I mean, the other one is two, but when you, when you go back in, you're having to dig through that geodex out.
But you wouldn't have to with the cement, that's what I'm saying. So, Niles, how do you feel about it?
Well, I, I think, I think it just makes sense to do the cement, it's gonna be more expensive than we, need to guess about what increases would be within the other. Everybody's gonna run into that, matting, whether it's plumbing, or whether it's town boards trying to put the water line in, or whatever. So I think the cement is, you know, most laws came out of there.
Um, cement is a better way though.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
So, cement way is, is a better way to go, or is that the thing?
I think everybody's gonna be more pleased with that, and I think the engineering firm's gonna be after with that one day.
Well, so, we need to get moving.
What we just need is, you know, a, authority to go ahead and tell Young and McQueen and. The engineering firms, the decision we've made, we're gonna have to amend the soul. And that's the, the cement stabilization, we go with their recommendation.
Well, I, I mean, it doesn't seem like we have too much of a choice, and I would be in favor of that, you know, that seems to be our. Better of the two choices we have. I would think so, may I just get one thing clarified in my mind? Is it correct, for the record, that when this piece of property was purchased for a fire department? There were no court, there were no court samples taken to ensure that that property was. Fit to build a fire department on, nobody knew what was down there?
There were no court, anything done on the problem. We had a, uh, phase one environment study done twice, but none of those included court that.
Thank you. Well, I mean, there are not, I mean, so we really need to, to make a decision tonight, or is, is there something else we need to think about doing, Russell, you and Niles? Uh, before we make a final decision?
My understanding is Young and McQueen will come and turn to the site, feel that two decisions made about soul, is that correct, Russell?
That's great, they're, they're really, they're really out of anything to do to, to let decisions. Yes.
Well, I mean. Seems like that's our option, and I, I would favor moving in that direction. I'm just curious, as a board, how do you feel, Russell? And Jean, you're next.
Uh, uh, I have rather mixed emotions about this, Mayor, just to be honest with you, uh. I, I can't go against. An engineer and a. Soil firm, but, you know, there's a, there's a part of me that. That feels comfortable with the building as it is. I, I just have to say that, uh, you know, these. Private, private projects go up every day that, that have no. Engineering done on private roadway to build. You know, I've, I've been at the site several times, much as Niles has. I just feel like the building itself and slabs associated with the building. Hold up, but again, I, I can't. You know, I, I have no, I have no professional opinion.
Well, so what's the modest demand if we, so it is, it is as it is?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money. I mean, it, it is, you know. And, and Ben and I have talked at, at Wens, you know, and Heather has too. You know. He, he, he can't go against what he's saying here. You know, I, I would make the remark, well, one, one small crack in the concrete to me is. Better than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, you know, as long as it's. Doesn't jeopardize the structure of the building. Again, I, I can't, I can't go against a professional, that's just my opinion about people.
Or do you need it?
It's just a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. I was just gonna say it is. Where's it going from?
Private tax reserves.
What we got? I agree with Russell. I mean, this land was, um, this is something that. I can't relate. I mean, it's probably the best land in the town of Barstow. And I can't believe this happened, but what are you gonna do? We can't. Can't not go on. Maybe we can take up a collection, don't we? You know. Hit it in the paper or something. So, Niles.
And, and I will say, Niles, correct me if I'm wrong, but. I, I will say that I, I feel like that if we, if we do decide to do this, that. You know, that one option, I, I know cutting, we're, we're slim on cuts, but one option would be to. Maybe hold off on some pavement for. For a year or so. I mean, that, you know, that's one place that we could save some money. It's not gonna be a hundred. Seventy-five thousand dollars, but. That is one, one option. Don't you think, Niles?
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple of things I think I agree with you about. You put down just the. Base down, I think that's just gonna come up in the winter time anyway. See what the weather. The other thing we might need to cut is drive a road around the end. It's a little much. It's not gonna reach the ground, that's what they're heading down to. We could make, take a look, some changes later, maybe. Cut out of the building and sell, but we could save some money on.
I think just some preliminary numbers that Sam and I talked about just on the asphalt with around, like around fifty, fifty thousand dollars possibly, is that correct? And I, I know one thing that he had mentioned to you, and that's, I, I have no. Uh, opinion on that whatsoever. That's totally, totally up to you, was, was that, uh, filtration system. You know, he did say that was something that can be put in later date, but I know it's something that's probably important to you as well, so.
Well, I'd rather leave it in if we're gonna spend the money anyway. It's not gonna cover the whole house. The issue with cancer, the firefighters is one that's in everything I read every day. I think we've got to address that best that you.
Well, I, 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 so you're in agreement that if we do go with this, that you're in agreement on the asphalt that we can just kinda?
I, I'm okay with that, because I really. That I was gonna hold up to the land or anything. Put down that two inches of the asphalt, I don't want a binder. I don't think the binder will stay.
Okay. So, I mean, I'll, I'll get those numbers and we can, we can adjust forward while you. You know, maybe get it down where we're. Looking at a little over hundreds to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's, that's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt any of the operations over there, uh, you know, just. So the concrete apron is gonna come out to the roadway pretty much, so the trucks will, you know, be on the concrete. You know, it's just not gonna, the, the roadway around back is just not gonna, it's gonna be stone instead of pavement, and that's something that you, we can do at any time, once we have funds. That would be somewhere that you could save some money and not.
But, but to get this project moving, because it's that standstill.
Yeah.
We need to make a decision about the cement option. Is that the better option of the two?
I think it is. I mean, that.
It's what they recommended.
That, that's, that's BLA's recommendation, and if you're gonna go with one, that would be my recommendation, but I think it will be the. Most cost effective.
Well, then, I'm, I'm, I make the motion that we go in that direction. And open for discussion. I mean, how do you go on feeling?
Well, I know it's a lot of money, but if the foundation isn't strong, are we looking at? Other problems later on, like with the water lines and the structure of the building and. The geotextile is lesser expensive, it's gonna cost more during the construction.
In the long run, probably, I think.
I, I think the cement stabilization is, is the best option from, from where we are right now.
So you favor that? How do you go there?
Well, I don't believe in being penny wise and pound foolish. I think that we should go with their recommendation. Go ahead and get started and, because we don't want. At some point in the future for part of the structure to fail because we didn't give it a strong foundation. So I think we should go with the engineer's recommendation.
Oh, I see. I make that motion that we go with the engineer's recommendation, is that so? Are we in agreement?
Uh.
Okay, so, did you hear all that, uh, Niles?
Yes, I did.
Are you okay with that?
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm in agreement.
Good. Okay, and I'm glad to hear that, that it will be done by subcontractors specializes in that application. Okay, and Russell, thank you for your time to engage the.
I hate, I hate it, but it's just, it's a unforeseen situation. I guess what it is.
Well, uh, who will contact Young McQueen?
Do what? Now?
Will you contact Young McQueen, let them know?
I'll call him soon at the meeting in the chair.
Thank you.
I think you deal with my hand, didn't you, Niles? So, so there's, that's the, that. Um, we'll move on, and thank you, Niles, for your report. We'll move on to. Here you are in the back, for once you're not eating supper.
I'd like to thank y'all for getting here.
Are you getting ready to pass the mic?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, just real quick, you know, our activity logs. Uh, luckily. Corona free in the department. We've got a couple of, uh, concerns that might look. Or deviled individuals, there's a lot of deviled individuals, some of that secondhand type stuff, but none of that's. And now everybody's fantastic, it's been initiated with the department, so we're blessed with that. Um, but again, in that business, you know, I guess as close to business as usual. Uh, from the zoning, I'll go ahead and go zoning, we're still working, uh, with the nonprofits. It's worked through last time, but we haven't had too many, that's probably not unexpected. Super situation at this point, but not as much to destruction. Right now at this point, is there maybe a problem right now?
Uh.
Yes.
Mentioned your new title, TCT, time clock trainer.
Well, we, we're implementing a new, the time clocks we have have been, I don't know. Thirty, forty, fifty, I don't know.
You need to be a museum.
In that system. Uh, we're with the department, uh, we, I got it finally set up today, proximity cardage with the guy, so the guys can just. Card up and hit the end button, it checks in, checks them out, but the main goal of that is, because we have guys that. Mess up the time clock for one, and walk on the wrong card, or forget the clock in and out, we're hoping that limits that. But mainly to try to track hours worked, and this system does email alerts if people work over a certain amount of hours to supervisors, and those types of things. So maybe, we're gonna have overtime, but that's just gonna happen, but maybe overtime that might not be necessary when you start to manage some of that. And also, it should cut down a bit of staff time, because this automatically calculates the entire. Uh, the hours worked and sends, sends that, you know, it's a little like pick up time cards, Jackie doesn't have to live through the hand, carry it on the hand, it's a center of performance. All the hours of everybody's work, so if it works out and it's a one time, if it was a one time, what's four hundred dollars?
I think it was a little under four hundred dollars.
And there's an over monthly fee that all takes, so I think if, if it works like we hope it will, a little more than that.
And we'll implement, we're testing it out with the police department first, so they're actually clocking in both ways right now, so we can make sure we're accurate with everything. But Janice said it was super easy to install, didn't take her harder anytime, and then we're gonna expand it. To the other, to the other department. They have little key fogs and they just have to wave them, they don't have to spot them, and, and then everybody can have a pin number too, if they lose them all.
Good luck.
Probably.
According to our overtime report, we needed some.
The clock can only do so much.
Right.
Yes, definitely.
Well, I'm curious, uh, this is not to digress from what we're talking about, but. You do work with the class there. What's their decision?
The last meeting that I had was a Zoom meeting with, uh, their board, and. It, the impression, they made no decision to start with, but the impression that I had that was they were exploring the possibility of. Maybe for this year, having it at the high school. However, I don't think at that point anyone had actually talked to the school system, so I don't know, I, I, I don't know the status, but it didn't seem like they felt. Like it was gonna work out on the square with everything going on, and that was before the governors, you know, this week. But I haven't heard an official decision. I don't think an official decision's been made as of the last thing one told.
They told me they were waiting to see what the governor did.
That was, that was what they were gonna do.
If it's done, I'd say it's. Not that one.
That would be my guess, is they probably won't have it once they get involved.
Majority of the board didn't want to do it.
Yeah. That's what, that's what I would assume, but if I are different, I'll try to let y'all know, because I know that's a, that's a big read, and we need to know soon to make some plans and preparations.
Okay.
But.
This is four.
I got the phone.
Thank you very much. Uh, you know, we're gonna move on to you.
All right, so. Uh, quick update on the wastewater treatment plant, uh. I have so many names in my head. Genesis, uh, started their work. And they had the whole entire thing torn down and, I'm gonna praise that wall that's supposed to be. Torn apart, and it was torn down like two days, uh, and it doesn't take longer, so that was a nice sight. Um, there. There was no bulge in the clarifier, that would, that was, they thought there was, but there wasn't. Um, so that's good news, our CL two chambers are, uh, we can really back in addition, so that's where the mine's gonna be allocated there. Uh, for the rehab portion of it, uh, the twenty ninth, which is month day, I believe. Uh, environmental blasting, I think it's what the company name is, uh, they're coming out, they're gonna start blasting the tank to get ready for coating, and then after the coating. Everything goes back together. So it's going very quickly. So that's the good news. Um.
They don't wanna ban you.
Yeah, I got plenty of that.
What did they blast away? Is it like sludge and stuff?
No, it's basically just taking like any rust, so they're gonna have to cut steel out and all that stuff, but they're gonna have to blast the walls, uh. It's kind of like, it's like sand, but it's biodegradable in a way, so they don't have to pump it all out. Uh, and it takes off all the rust, the old coating and stuff like that, so then when they put new on, it actually has to be steel and protects it. Um. Local water supply plan, which I believe all you guys had, I just need.
A resolution.
Yeah, a res, the local water supply plan resolution, just need.
A motion and a vote, uh, we've all had that in our head. This is something you do the annual one?
Every five years.
Every five years, okay. So we need to, uh, adopt that resolution.
I might imagine to adopt.
Thank you. Russell, is there a second? Oh, second. Are we all in agreement? Yes, we are. And you wanna bring it on, tell us about the software contract?
Yes, and that is the Aqua Resource, and this is for, um, the backflow devices. And they, they're gonna be going into more stuff eventually as well, uh. Yeah, and it, it, it allows, it, it allows us to track everything on the computer, so instead of having everything on paper and stuff like that, uh. It's seven dollars and fifty cents for the customer who has to have it installed, that's just added in when that device is put in. Uh, and then all I need is for a motion for us to pay five hundred dollars to them. As a one time fee, and that's it, I don't pay anymore. Uh, and what that five hundred does is it allows us to send everything that we have in paper. To them, and they'll implement everything and build the, uh, talent page for us.
Sounds like a good deal.
So, yes.
These are mostly state required forms and.
Yes.
Things like that, show that the backflow systems have been checked.
Any compliant or anything like that, if it fails, we can actually see it, and we could go to them, we could send a letter, say, you know, you're not compliant, so you need to do this, if you don't, it'll happen.
Okay, so we need a, a motion, uh, for that.
Yes, I moved it, we, um, do that. Take care of that backflow.
Yes.
Very dumb.
That backflow software stuff. Whatever you want, of course, well, I'll say that.
Thank you.
We are in agreement, we are, thank you.
And I have one more thing.
Sure.
Uh. Water main break on Nineteen East is a nice little bubble out there right now. Um, our guys got a little carried away with the cold patch. Anyways, would be, uh, gave us a quote, it's emergency repair, I had got a couple quotes, um, he was a little bitter on that. Uh, seventy-five hundred dollars, uh. If I need a motion, could go ahead and move forward with that project?
So the project's doing a lot now?
Fixing the road on Nineteen, that big giant hole. Our home now.
Okay. Well, I'll be happy to make a motion.
The landing that we've made is negative.
Yes, second, case of motions been made in second, I'll be happy to.
You think where all that work was going on then, at meetings? At, at Jim Raven, or is that something for the state that's gonna?
No, that was us. That, that was a sewer line. Uh. Yeah, been busy. And then the next one is, I brought it up last meeting, is the sidewalk in front of home place, the patching in front of home place. I'd like to move forward with that, uh, as well as in front of, our own cherry lane in front of. The NCS, uh, that, that's, uh, would, would be paving as well, program total of seven thousand five twenty-five. That's replacing the sidewalk in front of, uh, the home place, and there's four patches, and then as well as a. There's a big cutout in front of the anti-house, and we've got a lot of points on it.
Okay. Someone will stop that much.
I'll make that motion. Because I go over the anti-house one three, three times a week, so it, it is bad.
Okay, I'll settle that. For the discussion? Are you okay with that, Niles?
Yeah, but why is it, we, why can't you just fix? Yeah, but why is it we, why can't you just fix it? Why do we have to move? To do those kinds of things? Why do we have to make motions to do it in a contract?
Oh.
We'll do that in piles.
Oh, my gosh.
So we have the motion and we said
Moment time.
Are we in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. What else do you have?
That's it. Everybody has any questions for me?
Well, you've been very busy. Thank you very much. Chan, I'm not gonna forget you.
Thanks.
Well, uh, we had a handful of events that uh, information about the government. It's faded. Unfortunately, uh, we had the fact we heard coming that canceled. About five more events around the back because and we were hoping for a little more capacity, but we didn't get it. Um, so we have three more weeks to tend to that. We're up to seventy-seven events canceled or rescheduled at this point. So it'll be quite a little bit longer, but hopefully we can pick back up.
Well, thank you very much. Just hanging in there a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have nothing to report on because we've been here a long enough. So that we do it in June, but if any of the board members would like to report on stuff, they can have it. Yeah. Okay. Jamie, well, I was like, hey, you're not gonna be on the floor.
A little messy when I started. It's like, man, I'm mayor. It was a pleasure to be with you in the flesh opposed to and I, if, if that's the way you've been looking at me all this time, larger than in the flesh, I'm sorry. So I apologize. I apologize. Good. I apologize for that.
You have been denied.
Cut it off.
Um, Madam Mayor and, and, and Council, as you know, we sent a letter to you. Nomination uh, for the town's appointment today, for the commission this year, as, as you may recall. The beginning of each fiscal year, there are two seats that are always up on the, on the commission. And those rotate for appointment between the town council and county commission. This year, the town council's seat to appoint is the seat that is allocated to a member of the healthcare community or the public utility. Um, area. And Shell Call is served on the E D C board in that capacity. And the E D C uh, board would certainly like to wholeheartedly recommend that she continue to serve. She's willing to do that. As well, she's been a great member, uh, brings a great um, perspective, not only from the healthcare community, but just uh, her common sense and, and willingness to speak is, is certainly appreciated. So would certainly tender that to you, whatever the board's pleasure is about appointing her or whomever you choose to do that.
I make a motion to reappoint Shell Call to the E D C board.
Motion.
I was gonna pull the brown.
You need so much to do.
T C T, you said.
I'm not a mental state, you all. Yeah.
You had one for all.
Jamie, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. We appreciate. I have, by way of just a quick update, we I have sort of been going on with business as usual, as, as much business as usual, which can carry on with. We did have two site visits, um, respective clients come to this year. This past Saturday, uh, we came to visit Virgil. Um, wasn't sure exactly how you conduct the site visit with a particular client in person in, in this situation, but we all managed to say a good distance away from each other. Um, they were very complimentary of the community. Um, so you know, it's one thing you can be encouraged about is certainly um, perspective from some folks who have traveled down here to more urban areas. Uh, certainly found that, uh, they felt that Virgil was uh, was a lot off the hook, so to speak. And um, my community, things seem to be going considerably well here under the circumstances. So um, I, I do appreciate, and I'll, I'll say this, Heather's willingness to, to sort of jump into trying to, to help us put together a public education effort, if you will, to deal with Executive Order one forty-seven. Uh, my board, when, when they met last, um, earlier this month, at that time, not knowing what the governor would do. Um, made a motion that, that, that we urge and put out some business guidance for our local uh, folks here who are shopping and local merchants, sort of encourage the use of of, of face coverage to encourage social distancing, encourage hand washing. And at that point in time, our board had um, made the motion to source a supply of masks that we would make available to, um, to merchants by working through the chain of commerce. Um, I had not put out that press release from E D C in anticipation of waiting for what the governor's announcement would be. And as it turns out, it was probably um, one instance where waiting is was better than to put out, um, you know, some statement that might be contrary to what he was looking to announce and what he didn't announce. You know, certainly our concern is, is, is we're not policymakers at E D C. Our, our goal is to be sure that the business environment here is, is, is um, as robust as we can make it under the circumstances. And we, we just have to deal with that. So certainly I, I appreciate Heather, H L P, all of emergency management. I know I've also been attached with about source of additional face coverings if we need to provide those. Jamie at the chamber and Alan Cook made, so we like to, to set it quickly and Brian. Uh, from law enforcement, uh, perspective, because you folks, of course, most of the businesses are in the city limits. It's gonna be more of an issue for you than it is county law enforcement by frankly. Um, to be able to educate our business owners, to educate our people. Um, I, I spoke to Pat, to Shell with regard to Pat's desire to sort of contribute to an effort to educate folks. Um, and, and, and join us in that and put some money toward it. So our, our hope is that we understand these times are difficult for everybody. It's not what we would want. The whole pandemic is not what we would want, but we have to, I have to deal with the situation as it is. So we're certainly happy to be able to work with, with you guys. Um, and provide some resources to our businesses here so they can at least make every effort to comply with the governor's requirement without it coming out of their pocket.
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, yes, that is, thank you for what you all are doing. Is there I realize it's not on the agenda, but indirectly through what you're talking about. Is there some feeling that we maybe should do a sign like you showed us, uh, Heather, that Waverpool has? Uh, is that gonna be helpful?
You know, I think all of those things are on the table. We look forward to getting some business input. Um, certainly would like to have, you know, sort of a united front in the information we put out. Um, I do think that bringing this up, I had talked to also with the county manager, you know, that the county received a large sum of COVID money. And um, some of that in her first plan had been set aside for the town. Part of it will go to um, uh, the sanitizing machines that we're getting to this building and for our police cars and for town hall. Um, but I think that there will be funds available to do some signage. Um, similar to what they have in Waverpool. I can say you know, it, it's good to have the signage there. I felt like maybe last weekend, I, I did walk at Lake Leagues on a couple of occasions and I felt like I saw more people. They do have signage there that, that were wearing face coverings. Um, but I don't you know, in the grocery stores, even the ones that are, you know, promoting the social distancing. I mean, all of them are and all the employees at the grocery stores are wearing face coverings. I, I don't feel like that there's a seventy-five percent, and this is totally anecdotal. I don't feel like the majority of people in either of the main grocery stores in Waverpool are wearing face coverings. Certainly a lot of people are. Um, but I think it can't help to put out there, you know, here's the precautions that you can take. Try to get everybody to at least um, adhere to them as much as we can. Um, enforcement obviously is an issue. We do not have the resources to have law enforcement everywhere at all times. I think, um, you know, we wanna work with businesses and citizens to just make it through this. You know, in, in an educational way as opposed to being a punitive way.
So that's something that you and Jamie and y'all will pursue or look at later on.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not gonna be pushing, but we're gonna be asked.
Oh, yes.
So I just thought I would have something to say.
Well, I think educating the public is, is always a good thing.
Okay. Well, we'll endorse that.
Jamie, I have an E D C question. That may be confidential if it is, just tell me. Um, Hickory Springs, have, have, have they, are they marketing that facility?
That was the site we should have.
Oh, it was.
So yeah, that, that site is, is, is being jointly marketed through um, through E D C and through Brookbridge in Charlotte. Um, the stunt corporation is, is, is the broker that excuse me, represents the family that owns Hickory Springs Corporation, uh, and has, has represented annual state dealings for four years. Uh, we met the broker up here on Saturday. Um, to, to walk to potential um, interested parties through that.
Welcome.
Um, so yeah, there's, there's some interest uh, in it. Um, that of course a topic that came up was the sewer connection there and going ahead and carrying on with that. And then what their usage would be depending on who ultimately winds up on that building. It may not be either of these, these folks, but it may be somebody else. But um, it has certainly um, garnered some interest. Um, in addition to the two parties that, that had, had the site visit there on Saturday. Um, submitted it to another project through Department of Commerce last week. Um, and expect some response back on that.
From a sewer standpoint, that, that work has been done from the building up to that piece of property. That's
Almost to it.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's ready to be. Right. The connection needs to make, as I understand it.
Something like that can be renewed.
Well, but that's, that's good to hear about though, Jamie. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Well, uh, last but not least, uh, we do not meet in July. So a happy July fourth to one and all. And we'll s- meet here again on August the third. So have a good holiday and someone will be on his way to come out when I see you again here. But have a safe and good holiday. Thank you.
Congratulations.
She's saying I was elected president of Carolina West.
They were, yeah. So when we, when we hosted here finally one day.